The Washoe County School Board received a lot of public comments regarding the topic of banning books at today's meeting. Michaela Hardy joins us live in the studio after attending them and listening in on the meeting. And Michaela, what were people saying?
Well, Ryan, today's meeting doesn't even have a single item discussing anything related to books in their agenda. And yet, the meeting room was so packed with people who showed up to share their comments that even the lobby outside of the room was crowded. And the first person to share their comment was Pastor John Amunshuku.
And for you to have a policy that says that in this meeting, you're against vulgarity, then that means this board is a hypocrite if you endorse books like this to be in the school system.
Following Pastor John was several more commenters reading books with explicit material that is available for students to read in public schools. This is not the first time Pastor John has raised concerns in school meetings. Our Miami affiliate reports he sparked a heated debate over banned books at the Broward County School Board meeting in April. And now, a conservative-based nonprofit organization called Turning Point Action has invited their pastor to share his concerns here.
He was just trying to convict the public and the school board of the atrocities that's happening to these kids and in our society, really.
There have been multiple occasions where the board has had to cut commenters short and even called recess a couple of times due to people being too disruptive during the meeting.
They gavelled down the speakers. They could not listen to these words, but they want our children reading them.
School police even had to escort a few people back to their seat or out of the building, including Pastor John.
What would make a school board get up and walk out after a citizen reads from a book that's available to children in the school system? Take a look and you'll find out for yourself. Go to I Know God Merch dot com and put in code JOHN316 and receive 20% off for a limited time. Come on, put something in the shopping cart. Help a brother out. Welcome to Disturbing the Peace with Pastor John Amunshuku. It's been a while since I've had the opportunity to do a podcast and to put things together for you to listen to, but I am back like I never left, baby. Now, listen, I recently went to the Washoe, or the Washu, I keep saying it the wrong way, I believe it's Washoe, County School District, and read from a book that they've have made available to kids in high school entitled American Psycho. Now, the book should be titled American Sicko because only a sicko would write a book like this. Now, the author calls it satire. I don't call it satire. I call it satanic. There's a difference between satire and that which is satanic. Now, what the Babylon Bee does, we can put that into the category of things being satire. There's nothing wrong with humor and being jovial and having fun. You know, oftentimes, people who are rather humorous, they don't like for people to pick on them. However, there's nothing wrong with satire. But this book is sick. When I say it's sick, it is sick. Now, I went to the school board meeting knowing that they've had many challenges in the Washu County School District. Reno, Nevada is a hotbed for the Obama-Biden administrations indoctrination camp by which President Obama used it as his place to push transgenderism upon children. We all know that Reno, Nevada is rife with issues and problems. It truly is. Now, I'll be the first to tell you that this school board is probably the most ghetto and trashiest school district in America. First and foremost, they have their school board meetings at 2:00 PM. What does that say? They don't want parents to attend. Just think about it. If you're a parent concerned about your child and you want to go and, you know, air out your grievances, you have to do it at 2:00 PM in Reno, Nevada. Not at 7:00 PM, not at 8:00 PM, not at 9:00 PM, not even at 6:00 PM. Most parents are at work at 2:00 PM. And then, we get to the school board meeting and the school board area where we sit in and we gather and where the school board is as well, the superintendent and blah, 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 blah. Man, this place looks like a trailer park. It's small. It's tiny. It's not well put together. I mean, what are they doing with the tax dollars? Maybe they're putting all the money towards the porn books and not investing in brick and mortar. But this place was sloppy. And there were a lot of people who came out because we heavily promoted this event because we wanted the general public to come out and support. And I had been receiving phone calls from this area for a while wanting me to come and speak. And so, many people from the local community came to the school board meeting prepared to speak out and to support my national campaign alongside Turning Point USA. Now, we packed the school board room out, so much so that people were hanging out in the lobby. They were told that they couldn't hang out in the lobby. They had to be against the wall. And then, they had an overflow room, and that overflow room was smaller than a doghouse, like literally, smaller than a doghouse. You know, you couldn't put a 40 or 50-pound dog in that room. It's just so sloppy and trashy and ghetto. I mean, just come on, Reno. What are you doing? I know y'all have enough money to do better than this. And local organizations and community members and parents have complained about this before because if you have a grievance, you can't even get into the school board to even address it because there's not enough space. So, the school board room was packed. The hallway was packed. The overflow was packed. And you know, at that point, they started to tell people, well, you can't gather, you can't assemble, you have to leave. And so, people started leaving. And so, I'm sure there were over 200 to 300 people who came to the school board meeting, but what if 500 people showed up or 1,000 people showed up? There's not enough space for them to come and to have due process and to share their concerns. I believe that this is intentional. In the same manner that they have the school board meeting starting at 2:00 PM, they put it in a doghouse and in a trailer park-looking building on purpose. This is disgusting, and we can do better than this. Now, I read from the book entitled American Psycho. American Psycho is a horror novel by American writer Brett Easton Ellis, published in 1991. You've probably heard about this book before. The story is told in the first person by Patrick Bateman, a wealthy narcissistic vain Manhattan investment banker who lives a double life as a serial killer. This book is not only gruesome and grotesque, it's pornographic. And, you know, don't take my word from it. You know, I recently went on the Charlie Kirk Show to discuss this, and I thank Charlie Kirk so much for supporting this campaign and for Dr. Bob, who has funded this campaign as well. You know what? You know what? Take a look for yourself. You'll be able to see, you'll hear my message, you'll hear my feedback and my conversation with Charlie Kirk. Take a look at this. We went on Real America's Voice. Enjoy.
One of my favorite people in America right now is Pastor John Amunshuku. He is traveling the country with TPUSA Faith. He is terrific. He also has a new book out, Hoodwinked: Ten Lies Americans Believe. I wrote the foreword to this book, and the truth will set them free. Pastor Amunshuku joins us right now. Pastor, walk us through what happened yesterday in Washoe County, Nevada.
Charlie, demons were released in Washoe, not simply because I showed up, but because the church was present, and the church has been present for a while. But we had a mass group of people go to a roundtable, first and foremost, to discuss what's going on at the Washoe County School District. And then, we went to the school board meeting, and this school board has to be the most trashiest and ghetto school board in America. Number one, they have the school board meeting at 2:00 PM. I mean, parents can't go to a school board meeting at 2:00 PM in the first place. You know, they're at work. They're trying to earn a living. They're trying to find a way to figure out how to overcome all of this inflation that the Obama-Biden administration has caused intentionally. I digress. But at 2:00 PM, they have a school board meeting scheduled. And then, the room is packed, and the room is as large as a trailer. You know, you can only get about 30 people in there. And then, the overflow is packed, and then, people are lining up in the hallways because, you know, there were hundreds of people who came out in support of what we're doing alongside TPUSA and the support that Dr. Bob has so generously given towards this campaign. And so, I stand up and read from the book entitled American Psycho that's in three different schools, three of the high schools in particular. And the moment I get into the first sentence, the vice chair of the school board begins to gavel me down and says, you know what? That's one strike. And I keep reading, and then, the entire board gets up and walks out. The vice chair says that the meeting has been adjourned, and the snowflake tyrants walk out of the school board meeting, leaving me at the podium to continue to do whatever I want to do. But they walk out of the school board meeting because they said that the content that I was reading was too vulgar. Too vulgar, Charlie.
But it's okay for the children, but not okay for the school board. Okay, I want to play the tape here. Little trigger warning, if you have kids, don't listen to this. And this is so bad. So, this is cut 61. It's a minute and 15 seconds. You were reading from the actual textbook, is that right? A book available at Reno-Galeno and Spanish Springs High Schools, correct?
I was reading from their porn, yes.
So, this is the brilliance of what Reverend Amunshuku is doing. He goes and reads what is okay for kids to read, but then, adults hear it at the school board meeting, and they say, we have to end the meeting. So, a 13-year-old can read it, internalize it, and study it, but adults, they don't want to hear it. Play cut 61.
This book references vulgarity. It says, "Christie is on all fours facing the headboard, her ass raised high in the air, and I'm straddling her back as if I was riding a dog or something, but backward, my knees resting on the mattress, my half hard, and I'm facing Sabrina, who is staring at Christie's spread open ass with a determined expression. Her smile seems tortured, and she's wetting her own lips by herself and tracing her glistening index finger across them like she's applying lip gloss. With both my hands, I keep Christie's ass and spread open, and I urge Sabrina to move in closer and sniff them, to sniff her rectum."
All right, we're gonna adjourn folks.
I motion for Sabrina to move her face in closer. I care if she can stare at my fingers. I push it. What you just saw was a bunch of tyrants. Leave the school board meeting because they don't want to hear vulgarity in a book because I read what kids get to read in three schools.
Reverend, again, what you are doing is the Lord's work. You are shining a light on what they say is perfectly fine for 14-year-olds, but when you do it at a school board meeting, they have you expelled. Tell us about it.
The hypocrisy of it all, Charlie, is what we have to key in on. These people are demonic. They can care less about your children. I've been trying to tell people around this country. I've now been to 14 states. We've been able to collectively alongside TPUSA and others, a mass over 300 million views. We've been able to flip two school boards, one in Pennsylvania and one in New Jersey. We were able to strike down a transgender policy in New Jersey, Policy 5756. We defeated the devil in, for a lot of day, Broward County. There was a person there that was trying to ban the Bible in the public school system, a Satanist, to be exact. And on the day that I showed up to confront him, the coward Satanist didn't even show up, so the devil lost again. We've been able to remove dozens of pornographic books from around the country, and the work still presses on, and we're going to 12 more states this year. Keep in mind, this book, American Psycho, has led to gross massacres in this world. A copy was found in possession of Wade Frankham, perpetrator of the 1991 Stratfield massacre in Sydney, Australia. Because of that, you have to be 18 years old to purchase this book in Australia, all right? During the trial of Canadian serial killer Paul Bernardo, a copy was discovered in Bernardo's bedroom. And then, during the Duke Lacrosse case, a team member named Ryan McFadden sent a profane email to several of his teammates alleging he was going to kill and skin some strippers. The administrators asserted the email was an imitation of Bateman, one of the characters in this book. This book has led to people losing their lives. Why are we putting this in public school systems around this country? It's not only in Nevada, it's everywhere. Why are they pushing this filth upon children that not only indoctrinates them, I call it mental rape because it assaults the soul, it stains the brain, and it robs kids of their innocence? This is intentional. And so, we need to put the right people in office, men like President Trump, who wants to bring back the Ten Commandments. We need that. We need God's Word to be plastered on the walls of our schools in this nation. And just think about it. In this country, from 1962, when prayer was removed, up to 2024, we have gone from prayer to porn, from prayer to trannies gallivanting around our school boards and our classrooms. We've gone from prayer to critical race theory and intentional race-baiting tactics, labeling whites as inherently racist and blacks as proverbial victims. We've gone from prayer to now calling math racist. We're losing our minds. But there is hope. Because the Lord has given me the grace to speak truth to power, I have a supportive team alongside Turning Point USA. Hats off to you, Charlie. You don't get the commendations that you deserve for being a beacon for hope and change in this country. Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for, two years ago, you found me. I had no followers. I didn't have the reputation and the support that I have today, but you said, you know what? I believe in what you're doing, Pastor John. And you have poured in thousands and thousands of dollars. Dr. Bob has put in hundreds of thousands of dollars to support this work. Thank you so much for what you're doing because because of you, I'm able to get across this nation.
See? You see for yourself. Man, these people have lost their minds, and I'm labeled as the book-banning pastor because I believe that kids should be protected. What do you think? Am I a book-banning pastor, or am I just a simple American patriot who's doing his best to defend children around this country? I've now been to 14 states, 14 states, and I'm set to go to 12 more states this year, speaking out on behalf of children, fighting against gender theory, queer theory, and what I call the false triune idol of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Now, I call it a false triune idol simply because it mimics the Trinity, DEI does. You know, in the Trinity, we had the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Now, God, God longs for private worship, private worship. And from our private worship, that extends out into corporate worship, all right? But when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion, they can care less about private worship. They want public worship. They want you to bow and to dance to the music of King Nebuchadnezzar. They want you to worship them in public. And if you don't do this, oh, boy, if you don't dance, you know, to the music of the culture, if you don't dance to the music of the Obama-Biden administration, if you don't shake a tail feather to DEI and transgenderism and the woke mafia and critical race theory and intersectionality and all of this patriarchy junk, if you don't dance to this music, they'll label you as a book-banning pastor. They'll tell you that you are a Uncle Tom or a coon. They'll send you hate mail and graphic images. They'll try to censor you and cancel you and deplatform you simply because you have true, traditional, American values. Yes, they will do that to you. It's happened to me, and possibly, it's happening to you right now. But I say to those of you who are listening, don't shut up. Don't be quiet. Don't tuck tail and run. This school board in Reno, Nevada, they are corrupt. Who gives them the right, and what gives them the right, to leave their chairs and to walk out as I begin to read from a book that kids get to see every day in their school system? Well, it's vulgar. It's pornographic. Duh! If it's vulgar to the snowflake school board members, shouldn't it be vulgar to the kids? Oh, so do we have a higher standard for the queens and the kings on the school board? They can't hear it. Oh, gosh, they can't hear it. Because if they hear it, oh, it might upset their sensibilities. All I did was just read from the smut that the kids get to see, and they gavelled me down at first, and they told me that was my first warning. And on the second time, they said, that's it. We're going, we're gonna adjourn this school board meeting, and they walk out. Hear me, they walked out. I'm standing at the lectern, reading from a book, and the book is so, I mean, so vulgar to them that they get up and they walk out, and they leave me, I guess, in control of the room. The cops come in, and they tell me to sit down. I tell the cops, no, I'm not going anywhere. I'm not gonna sit down because if I don't speak up, no one is gonna speak up for the children in that area. If we don't get more people and more pastors and more leaders, and we thank God for the pastors that were there, you know, and these men are gonna continue to come back and stand boldly, but if I don't make a strong case for the need for support in defending children around this nation, we're in trouble. But I'm not doing this alone. There are many others who are doing it alongside me. But there should be more pastors standing boldly. There are not enough. There's no way in this world that those school board leaders should still have their jobs today. Where is the outcry? When people get angry and they begin to practice what is called peaceful civil disobedience, these things won't happen. But so as long as we go along to get along and we be nice, you know? Today, it's all about being a nice Christian. Yeah, be a nice Christian. Don't be a faithful Christian, be a nice Christian. You know, nice Christians, they won't read from the pornographic smut that's being handed to kids, you know? They'd say that that's above the pale, that that's going too far. They'll just come to the school board meeting, or you know what? They won't even show up to the school board meeting. They'll just whisper a prayer, Dear heavenly Lord, we pray, God, that you'd do something about what's going on in the schools. Amen. And they go on about the rest of their day. They do nothing. Nice Christians are some of the most impotent, weak, and spineless people on the face of the earth. God wants faithful Christians. You know, faithful Christians are willing to do what Elijah did when he went into King Ahab after King Ahab started bringing in pagan worship, all right? Our good friend Elijah goes in and tells him, "There'll be no dew nor rain until I say so." And guess what? If you were to walk in and to tell a king that, do you not know that he was supposed to be killed? His head was supposed to be lifted from his shoulders? But he did it anyway, not in the authority of Elijah, but in the authority of Almighty God. Are our children worth protecting and defending? Now, Proverbs, Chapter 22, verse 6 says, "Train up a child in a way that they should go, in the way that they should go, and when they are old, they will not depart from it." So, we're called to train them up, not to mess them up. The Washu County School District of Reno, Nevada, you're not training up children, you're messing them up. You're queering them out. You're sodomizing their mind. It's called mental rape. Some call it indoctrination. Some call it grooming, but I call it mental rape. Call it mental rape because it assaults the soul, it stains the brain, and it robs children of their innocence. This must end. This is a grave injustice. And to all of the Christians out there who want to be nice, you will not see Jesus, you nice, pacifying, male lace-wearing preacher, those of you who like to just be nice, you nice Christian, look around, nice Christians. Look at the mess that we're in, nice Christians. Look at it. Look at where we are. Drag queens are coming into the public school system and reading to our kids. Drag queens are coming to our local areas, and they're having family-friendly events, and parents are bringing their children to watch men in a dress with hairy legs and a beard thicker than mine and longer than mine do nice things in front of kids, corrupt things, but the nice Christian calls them nice. And they say, don't judge, don't judge, don't say anything, don't speak out against them, don't say it's wrong, don't call it immoral, don't call it vain, don't call it corrupt, just don't say anything. But the faithful Christian understands that the Bible says, "Woe to those who call evil good and good evil." We cannot sit idly by and say nothing about the fact that our children are being perverted. And so, they call me a book-banning pastor. No, I am a faithful Christian. Some say, no, you represent the Christian right. No, I don't represent the Christian right, whatever that is. I'm just a right Christian, a right Christian. And if you seek to be a nice Christian versus a faithful Christian, you are a wrong Christian. The Bible tells us we should put a difference between good and evil, clean and unclean things, righteousness and unrighteousness. You have to put the difference there, which means you have to say something, you have to use your voice. That's why I'm raising up 400 Cyclones, 400 school board leaders nationally, to come alongside me. And if you want to know more about that, go to I KnowGod.us and sign up to be a part of Cyclone 400. You can join the army. We have a toolkit that we will send to you as well, which is the most comprehensive toolkit in America. You want to know why? Because it's thoroughly biblically integrated. You know, most of these toolkits today, they are very secular. I'm not fighting with the power and the authority of secularism. I'm not fighting with the authority of the occult world or the pagan culture. No, I'm fighting with this. This right here, the Bible, the basic instructions before leaving Earth. And do you not know that there were 56 signers of the Declaration of Independence? Do you not know that? 56 men signed on to that document. Guess who was the first person who signed it? A man by the name of John Hancock. And when you assess those most sacred documents, something would stand out that's rather unique. You would notice that John Hancock's name is nearly three to four times larger than everyone else's name. And he wanted it to be clear that number one, he supported the Declaration of Independence. He also wanted to make it easy for King Henry to see his name. He didn't want to hide like the nice Christian. He wanted to be faithful, and so, his name is written three to four times larger than everyone else, and his name is in bold. Hear me today, will you be the Christian who tries to hide in the background and be the nice Christian? Or will you be the bold Christian that makes your statement and statements publicly so that the world can't... and statements publicly so that the world can hear and the world can know where you stand? The question today is not where does the Bible stand and where does God stand? The question is where do you stand? God's word is true. Can't, it can't change. And he cannot lie. He's immutable. The question is, where do you stand? Do you believe that children deserve to be protected? That's the question. That's the question, my friend. That's the question. You know, I don't enjoy reading smut like this. Here's another book. It's called Let's Talk About It. I don't, I don't enjoy reading these books. I can't even open this book and show you everything that's in it. You know, I mean, who wants their child to receive a crash course lesson on how to insert a bu- a butt plug? Do you? Yeah, do you? Do you want little Johnny to learn how to insert a butt plug? Do you want him to learn that? No, 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 nice Christian, nice Christian. You call me a book banner because I'm against that, nice Christian. Mm hmm. And when you see Jesus, nice Christian, he's going to tell you, depart from me. You worker of iniquity, I never knew you. But to the faithful, to the book banners, he's gonna say, well done, thou good and faithful servant. Let me add this to this commentary. There was a media outlet called the Nevada Current. They said this, they wrote this, they said, North Carolina pastor John Amen Shuku started reading a passage from American Psycho that included several lines of profanity and depicted a sexual encounter. Despite trustees warning speakers to refrain from using the language in a public setting, after several warnings to Amen Shuku, trustees took a brief recess as an attempt to restore order. So they took a recess because they wanted order. No, I came and spoke because there was no order. You can't claim to have order. And there are books in the school system that promote individuals going and smelling someone's rectum. Yes, that that's crazy. Just think about it. It's disgusting for me to have to say, but I have to say it because you won't know about it unless we say it and read the smut. Nice Christian, fall in line or get down and out of the way. Nice Christian, will you stand in the day of judgment? Then it goes on to say, Debbie Steers, the collection development manager at Washoe County Library System, spoke against possible book bans and said, many of the books named at the school board meeting were the same titles book banners have attempted to remove from the public library system. She said she has read the books being mentioned and said she didn't find obscenity or pornography as your challengers claim? So if she read this book, American Psycho, and didn't find any pornography or anything obscene, then why did the board recess? Why did they attempt to adjourn the meeting? Why did they walk out while I was reading from the book, American Psycho? Several others read from books and they walked out on them also. If the books are not pornographic, Debbie, Debbie Steers, Debbie Steers, Debbie, oh, Debbie. Can you hear me? Debbie, with your lying self, God gonna get you, Debbie. You, you, my, how you gonna lie like this? It's it's right here. I'm reading it. This is from the Nevada Current. Debbie said, I read the books being mentioned and didn't find obscenity or pornography as the challengers claim. You are a liar. That's what you are. You want to know, you want to know, you want to know the proof that you are a liar? The proof is when you watch the video, the board walked out. Why? Because the content was obscene. Because the content was vulgar. Because I dared to do what many preachers won't do. I read from the book in a public setting. They walked out because it was vulgar. Debbie Steers, Debbie Steers, can you hear the words that are coming out of my mouth? Debbie, I pray for your soul. I pray for your soul. I do. I pray, I pray for your soul, Debbie. I pray for. Debbie. Debbie, Debbie. You don't know what you're doing. Do you not know that the Bible tells us in Luke seventeen two, that it's better for a man to be thrown into the sea with a millstone around his neck than for someone to do harm to a child? Debbie Steers, let me talk to you. Do you not know that every man shall stand before the judgment seat of Christ to give an answer of what they've done in their bodies, whether it be good or bad? Paul says, and knowing the terror, knowing the judgment of God, we persuade men. Debbie, Debbie, you don't, you don't know what you're doing, sweetheart. You don't. Do you not know, Debbie Steers, that it's a terrible thing to be in the hands of an angry God? Now, I know you you all like to depict Jesus as this weak, testosteroneless male figure with a testosterone of fifty who's just sitting there with O Peter, with Peter Boy, right? You like to depict Jesus as a weak, effeminate, spineless leader hanging out with Peter Boy and the other boys, the other disciples, the other apostles. No, man, our our Lord and Savior, he had rough hands. He was a lumberjack. He, if he wore cologne, he probably smelled, if Jesus wore cologne, he smelled like brute. He was a man's man. And society and the American culture seeks to wussify him. No, not my Savior. Strong. Hear me today. We cannot allow these books. We cannot allow these books to continue to be on the bookshelves in this nation. They have to be removed. They have to be removed. And I'm calling for the faithful Christians. I'm calling for those Christian leaders out there who understand that time is running out. And we better act while we have a chance. And what's left of our constitutional republic, we better hold on to it. As I told you earlier, go to I know God dot U S and download a copy of my battle plan. And then I will send you a copy of my toolkit. I'm soon to prepare a masterclass on how to reclaim our schools and our communities. You do want to receive this material. And if you appreciate the work that I'm doing nationally, I've now been to fourteen states, amassed over three hundred million views speaking up for children, been able to flip two school boards, strike down a transgender policy and remove dozens of pornographic books. If you would like to support this podcast and help me get it on, Real America's Voice or some other major platform, I need your contribution. So go to I know God dot U S, give a donation, support the work that I'm doing, download the free battle plan. And whatever you do, my friend, don't forget to disturb the peace. God bless you and God bless.